The Town of Farmington. Respecting history, planning the future.
I will now call the May 10 regular Town Council meeting to order. Keith, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we will begin with Item C1, Presentations and Recognitions. Kathy.
I'm here today to give an employee award and a recognition, a life-saving award. So maybe a few people could come up. And it's Nicole and Andrea. And I think we have in the audience, too, Peter, if he wouldn't mind coming up, too. So on March 22, 2022, Farmington resident Peter, Peter Byron, was at the senior center playing pickleball. In the midst of the match, Peter suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. Andrea Bouchard, our senior center coordinator, and Nicole McClintock, our program clerk, acted quickly. Equipped with a defibrillator and their CPR knowledge, Andrea and Nicole were able to sustain Peter's life until emergency services arrived. Betsy Rollins, a community member who witnessed the incident, assisted in the life-saving efforts. On behalf of the Town of Farmington and the Farmington Town Council, I am presenting you both with our life-saving award. Thank you for going above and beyond the call of duty.
Turn the proclamations around for your pictures so they can see them.
Can we take a picture of them with the pickleball team?
Sure, sure. This must be the pickleball team?
Yes.
All right. Excellent.
You all want to come up here in the front where you've got a better background?
We'll duck.
Yeah, we should duck.
No one wants to see you.
Oh, you guys charge amazing attention. Oh, perfect.
Peter, did you want to say anything? Peter? Did you want to say anything? I could read. I had your Facebook post. If you want, I was going to read that. Or do you want to read it? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. As was said, that I, on March 22, was playing pickleball and had a cardiac arrest. And that's a type of heart attack where your heart stops. And so I collapsed onto the court, right in the middle of a game, which, of course, I have apologized to all of those people that were in that room that day that I pretty much spoiled their day. Pickleball, anyway. And Betsy Rollins and her mother sort of were helped out with. Betsy was the first person to come to me, and she, you know, found that I had no pulse. And, you know, they went for help and got Andrea and Nicole, who came with the defibrillator and Andrea's knowledge of CPR, which she had just updated this past year. Yay! But, and, you know, they saved my life. Of course, the EMTs came later, and they played an important part in that as well. We're leaving Andrea, so. But, and this is a story that I have pieced together because I have no memory of this. And it's a total blank for about three days when I came, became aware in the hospital somewhat later. So I have thanked all of these people that, and I will continue to thank them for the rest of my, well, this life because I finished up that other one. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Peter, and thank you for joining us. We're so happy you can be here.
Yeah, me, too.
I'm now getting nervous about all the people that said, "Oh, go try pickleball." Hope they didn't have ulterior motives. But Nicole and Andrea, thank you. It's, you know, we're so privileged to have incredible staff throughout Farmington. And when you come above and beyond and do something like this, I mean, it just, it makes us all proud to be here and have representatives of the town doing such an incredible job. So thank you.
Thank you.
And now you can scoot out if you like.
We'll be back when it's time to talk about making more pickleball.
I'm sure you will. Okay. Presentations and Recognitions, Item 2. Brian, that is you. Thank you, CJ.
I'm Brian Connolly, a Town Council member. I'm here to present a proclamation for childhood apraxia of speech day. Whereas, May 14 marks Childhood Apraxia of Speech Day, during which awareness will be raised throughout Connecticut about childhood apraxia of speech, an extremely challenging speech disorder that affects one in 1,000 children. And whereas, childhood apraxia of speech, known as CAS, causes children to have significant difficulty learning to speak and is among the most severe speech deficits in children. And whereas, the act of learning to speak comes effortlessly to most children. Those with apraxia require early, appropriate, and intensive speech therapy, often for many years, to learn to speak. And whereas, without appropriate speech therapy intervention, children with apraxia will have diminished communication skills but are also placed at high risk for secondary impact in reading, writing, spelling, and other school-related skills. And whereas, that such primary and secondary impacts diminish future independence and employment opportunities and challenge the ability to become productive, contributing citizens if not resolved or improved. And whereas, public awareness about childhood apraxia of speech in Connecticut is essential for families of children with this neurological disorder and the professionals who support them to achieve the needed services for those learning to use their own voice. And whereas, our highest respect goes to these children, as well as their families, for their effort, determination, and resilience in the face of such obstacles. And let it be resolved that May 14 is Apraxia Awareness Day, and citizens of Connecticut and surrounding, and surrounds are encouraged to work within their communities to increase awareness and understanding of childhood apraxia of speech dated in Farmington, Connecticut, this 10th day of May 2022. CJ Thomas, Chair.
Thank you, Brian. Okay, we will now move on to Item D, Public Hearing.
Legal Notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Town of Farmington will conduct a public hearing by the Town Council on Tuesday, May 10, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. at Town Hall, 1 Montith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, 06032, to discuss the fiscal year 2022 Community Development Block Grant Program and to solicit citizen input. Maximum award limits, up to $2 million for public housing modernization with priority to state-sponsored housing portfolio, and up to $1 million for infrastructure associated with the development of affordable housing, example, streets, sidewalks, sewer lines, windmills. Major activity category are acquisition, housing rehabilitation, public housing modernization, community facilities, public services, and economic development. Projects funded with CDBG allocations must carry out at least one of three national objectives: benefit to low and moderate income persons, elimination of slums and blight, or meeting urgent community development needs. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain citizens' view on the town's community development and housing needs, and review and discuss specific project activities in the areas of housing economic development or community facilities, which could be part of the town's application for funding for the year 2022. In addition, the town's current 2019 Small Cities Grant under public housing modernization will be discussed to obtain citizen input on it. Also, the public hearing will be to give citizens an opportunity to make their comments known on the program and for approval of the program income reuse plan. If you're unable to attend the public hearing, you may direct written comments to the Town of Farmington Town Manager's Office, 1 Montith Drive, Farmington, Connecticut, 06032, or you may telephone 860-675-2350. In addition, information may be obtained at the above address between the hours of 8:30 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. on Monday through Friday. The Community Development Housing Department, on behalf of the Town of Farmington, anticipates applying, applying for the grant amount of $400,000 under this housing modification category for window and door replacements at Tunxus Apartments in Unionville, Connecticut. In addition, the town will create a revolving loan fund with program, program income, principal and interest generated from the grant for a public housing rehabilitation loan program, if applicable. The Town of Farmington promotes fair housing and makes all programs available to low and moderate income families regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, gender identity or expression, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familial status, learning disability or physical/mental disability, or sexual orientation. And then, let's see, we have, I think I already read that. All are encouraged to attend. The hearing is accessible to the handicap and any disabled person requiring special assistance, or non-English speaking persons should contact Nancy Perrin, ADA Coordinator, at 860-675-2390 at least five days prior to the meeting. Equal opportunity affirmative action.
Thank you, Maureen. Nancy?
So as Maureen said, this hearing will take place in two different areas. The first is our new application, and I have Ed Cruz here to present the requests that we're making for the first application for Tunxus Apartments, the rehab. Do you want to come up?
Thank you, Nancy. Good evening, everyone. I'm Ed Cruz, a member of the Board of Director for Tunxus Apartments, which is in the Village of Unionville, section of Farmington, on Mill Street and Plattner, near Union School. The project was originally built in 1969 on a HUD loan, and that loan was a 40-year loan, which was paid off in 2009. We were required to have a replacement fund, which the HUD loan required, so that was done along those 40 years. And so we've used those funds to, you know, keep the property up. And as time goes on, you know, with keeping the rents low, this, you know, is become, you know, looking to the future and projects to keep the property in good, in good status to support, you know, the initial, you know, edict of the corporation, which is a not-for-profit organization, to, you know, provide affordable housing and continue that, you know, until, if it was no longer viable. So the funds would be used for a specific project. Right now, we're applying for, for windows and doors. We've done a lot of, you know, upkeep to the property over the years with everything from boiler systems and alarm systems and roofs, and there'll be other things, of course, as anyone owns property. So I just wanted to give a summary of what our property is about.
Great, thank you.
All right, thank you.
So as is required by the state when we're applying for the public hearing, if there are any questions, we need to make sure to be able to ask that. And of course, anybody can also direct any questions in the written form as well. Now I'm going to actually open up the second part of our hearing, and that is to give an update.
Nancy, before you go on, do we have any questions online?
Thank you, I'm sorry.
Or in the public? It's okay.
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. Go ahead.
Perfect, thanks. So the second part is to give an update on our current grant that we are finishing. And you'll see on the screen, and those who are online will get an opportunity to see some of the work done. I'll read the report, and, Kat, you said I just hit Enter to go through the screens?
The arrow, the next arrow.
Oh, perfect. Okay, great. So I'll just, they're in no specific order, but just to read, as you know, the Town of Farmington was awarded a 2019 Community Development Block Grant in the amount of $900,000 to rehabilitate units 66 through 71 at New Horizons Village, and that area is actually known as Gilligan's Island. As part of the state requirement to solicit citizen input on the project and to provide an update on the status, the second public hearing is being held. Please accept the following as a summary. The improvements under the grant included exterior envelope upgrades, including roofing, some siding, new doors, windows, and insulation, as well as other exterior site improvements, such as new walkways and lighting. A total of five companies submitted bids for this project. Bids ranged from $599,000 to a high bid of $759,000. The low bid was submitted by Construction Resources, COR, of Plainville, Connecticut. COR was awarded the bid for the Gilligan's Island project on June 4, 2021, for $599,928. Contracts were signed on June 15, 2021, and a pre-construction meeting was held on-site that same day. Notice to proceed was issued to COR on June 18, 21, and a project sign was erected at the entrance of the complex. COR was presently mobilized for another project, allowing the construction to begin within days of signing that contract. Because COR was below the original project estimates, and there was an opportunity to provide additional improvements to the Gilligan's Island complex, it was agreed that the additional work would include facility door openers, new condensation units for each of the six units in Gilligan's Island, six kitchen renovations, including appliances. The new work, like the original scope, will further modernize the complex by improving its functionality, accessibility, and overall efficiency. Farmington has requested and been given a budget extension to account for the additional time it will take to complete the additional change. The extension was approved through 12/31/22. A certificate of substantial completion was executed on December 12 for the original scope of work and punch list. The change is set to begin in early June with an anticipated completion date of mid-August. To date, the work has been professionally accomplished, the residents have been satisfied, and there are no known complaints. So here on the screen is just pictures of the work that they have done, and that whole area is the six apartment buildings known as Gilligan's Island. I just don't know how many pictures I'm going through here. I think that's my last one. So are there any questions, either in, present or online?
Any questions here in the audience? Seeing none, Kat?
There are none online.
None online. Obviously, you were complete and thorough and satisfied everyone's questions already.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Okay, we will now go to our second public hearing.
Maureen, Maureen.
Legal Notice, Town of Farmington Public Hearing. A public hearing will be held on May 10, 2022, at 7:05 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers to amend the Farmington Town Code, Chapter 29, Fire Department, dated at Farmington, Connecticut, this 26th day of April, 2022. Kathleen A. Blonsky, Town Manager.
Kathleen.
Chapter 29 of the Town Code is the Town Ordinance that defines and outlines the structures and the responsibilities of the Townwide Fire Department. The Townwide Fire Department consists of the Farmington Volunteer Fire Department, the Tunxus Hose Company, and the East Farmington Volunteer Fire Department. These volunteer companies provide firefighting, rescue, and emergency medical services throughout town. The Townwide Fire Department is a volunteer system that is supplemented by nine paid career firefighters and a paid director of fire and rescue services. The ordinance was last updated in 2003, when the town hired its first paid director of fire and rescue services. The town is in the process of hiring a new director of fire and rescue services. As the ordinance has presently written, the director of fire and rescue services manages the Unified Fire Department and reports directly to the town manager. The director does not supervise the volunteers and does not have any responsibility on the fire grounds. The director is an administrative position. The ordinance is also very specific that the volunteer fire chiefs are the direct supervisors of the paid, unionized, full-time career firefighters. I am recommending that the ordinance be amended to allow the director of fire and rescue services be the direct supervisor of the paid career firefighters. Even though our system of volunteer fire chiefs being the direct supervisor to the paid personnel is not typical, it has worked fairly well. That said, it is outdated. In general, a volunteer should not have the responsibility of the day-to-day supervision of full-time municipal employees. Our structure is even more complicated because each of the paid firefighters must report to three different volunteer fire chiefs or supervisors. The town's labor attorney has also provided a legal opinion which stated that the career firefighters should not be supervised by volunteer chiefs. I have the utmost respect for each of our volunteer chiefs, but feel strongly that personnel and labor issues, especially in a unionized environment, should be the responsibility of a municipal employee who reports to me. It is important to note again that I am not proposing any changes related to the fire grounds. The director of fire and rescue services will not have any responsibility at the on-scene fire ground operations. This will still be the command, this still will be commanded by the volunteer fire chiefs as well as their volunteer officers. The volunteer fire chiefs will also continue to have direct supervision of the volunteers. In summary, this amendment defines the director's duties, gives the director supervisory control over paid personnel. This amendment does not give the director of fire and rescue services control of the fire scene or the volunteer firefighters. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any questions from the public here in person? Seeing none? Any online?
No.
Again, clearly a very thorough and complete. So, all right, we will be moving on to Item E, New Items. Seeing none, we will now go to general public comment. If there's anyone in the public, I see one resident. Mike, come on up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Mike D'Amico. I live at 6 Deborah Lane, and I'm the State Representative for the 21st District. I hope that my presentation is as complete and concise as the previous ones this evening. I will try to do that. So I come with good news for all the taxpayers in Farmington, and I don't imagine this is news to you, Mr. Chair, or to the Town Manager, but for the members of the council and also for the public, just want everyone to know that based on the Budget Implementer Bill that the General Assembly passed and that the governor signed just the other day, Farmington will be receiving a 30% reimbursement for the Farmington High School project. The normal reimbursement rate for Farmington would have been around 19%, but due to this legislation, it will be 30% reimbursement. And I bring this up tonight because I know this is a subject of quite a bit of conversation when the legislative delegation for Farmington was here in front of the council a couple of months ago. So this potentially means millions of dollars more for Farmington for this, for this project, and that's, as I said, good news for everyone, taxpayers and teachers and students and parents alike. So just to briefly recap, there was a discrepancy of approximately $960,000, just under $1 million with regards to what the town had been promised from the state with regards to reimbursement for the high school project. Discrepancy of that amount between what was promised and then what was then told by state officials. So there was going to be a shortfall, potentially, and we, and the legislative delegation, myself, Senator Slapp, Representative Exum, Senator Lopes, were charged with the job of trying to rectify that discrepancy. So we did what we were supposed to do. We talked to legislative leadership. We brought it up in front of the Education Committee, and you, Mr. Chair, and the Town Manager, and the superintendent of schools, all testified in front of the Education Committee. And as a result, we ended up with a 30% reimbursement, much, much greater than the 19%, and also the discrepancy that was, that was at issue. So I would like to chalk it up to your input, as well as the hard work and the experienced leadership and the effective leadership of my colleagues and myself in working with the legislative leaders. We have a good working relationship among us and also with the legislative leaders, and that really, I think, helped us quite a bit in this, in this venture. So I, what I want to do is, because you're familiar with the saying, seeing is believing, so I will give it to you in print, if I could, Mr. Chair.
I was really hoping for one of those big checks they give out, but thank you.
I wish that was the money, but that just gives you, that just gives you the legislative language, so you have it in front of you there. So then, two other quick things I wanted to bring up. I noticed that in the agenda for today, there was a letter from the Town Manager that went to all of us in the legislative delegation about Senate Bill 423 having to do with improving indoor air quality in schools. I know that that bill was quite controversial. I just want to let you know that that bill did not get through the legislature. However, a modified version of that bill ended up in the final Budget Implementer Bill, and it has to do with, with, I want to get this right, and of course, I don't have it in front of me. Oh, yes. So the modified version speaks to a grant program administered by the Department of Administrative Services, a reimbursement grant program for indoor air quality in schools, and it also deals with requiring inspections of HVAC systems in school buildings on a periodic basis. So I don't want to get into the weeds tonight, obviously, but I just wanted to let you know that that bill that the Town Manager, you know, wrote to us about did not go through, but a modified version did go through, and I'd be happy to get to the details so that everyone, you know, knows what's going on there. And then finally, I just, I happen to notice that in the Town Manager's report, Farmington can expect to receive about $16,000 a year in fees, the NIP fees, for those NIP bottles that are unfortunately, you know, littering the town as well as the state. And based on the legislation we did last year, Farmington is going to receive about $16,000 a year. And of course, it all relates to how many NIP bottles are littered throughout the town. So we, obviously, we don't like the litter, but we'll take the $16,000. I'm sure we'll be happy about that. So again, the big news of the day, as far as I'm concerned, is the 30% reimbursement for the high school project. And again, kudos to the members of the Town Council, and we'll give a few kudos to the legislative delegation as well, and to my colleagues in the, in the General Assembly. And I think, I think that's a good place to leave it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Michael. It's not a proclamation, but I think we'll take it, so thank you very much.
Pretty good, huh? Pretty good. Thank you much. Thanks.
Any other public comments? Seeing none here, online?
We do have one online.
Okay.
Tim Kelly.
Tim, can we hear you?
Tim Kelly, 62 West. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. Here in Farmington, we have either a written or unwritten policy. Here in Farmington, we have either a written or unwritten policy for maintaining a healthy fund balance. This is good financial management, of course, but also largely driven by auditors and bond rating agencies to a significant degree, I believe. We seem to be caught in a process where we keep artificially moving the goalposts and holding more and more town money in the rainy day fund. In recent years, it's grown from 10 million to 12 million to 15 million to now over 18 million. I understand the outside pressures. No matter how good your audit is, they're always going to nitpick you on something. And the rating agencies are always going to recommend you do more. At this time, I believe we've reached the point where we should start to drive the process. Let's pick a thoughtful and reasonable number for our rainy day fund, for example, 20 million, and we'll call that sacred. And then our to-do is put together a one-page document or a slide set that articulates why a $20 million rainy day fund is more than enough for Farmington. If a boiler blows at IAR, it's $1 million. If a fire truck gets destroyed, it's 1.5. If a tornado blows a roof off a school, it's 2 million. But we're not in an earthquake zone. We're 50 miles from the shoreline if a hurricane hits, and we're not a risk area for major forest fires. And even in very difficult economic times, we've consistently demonstrated the ability to collect over 99% of taxes due. Because otherwise, the town is really just stockpiling local resident tax dollars and getting no return or very little interest on it. So you have the opportunity to take some unnecessary year-to-year pressure off the financial system here in Farmington. And going forward, we don't want to look like we're piling on the taxpayers as residents grapple with unusually high inflation costs. So planning ahead, in a year when we decide to spend more than our prescribed 2.5% budget guideline on one-time capital items, then we should very much consider using excess fund dollars or, if available, outside grant funds to help cover the need. For instance, our capital budget in 2021, '22 is 2.7%. And the capital budget just approved for 2022, '23 was 3.2%, up 23% year-to-year. It would be somewhat ironic if we slavishly adhered to a rainy fund savings percentage but yet exceeded our stated capital budget percentage for three years in a row. I would just close by making note of the canary in the coal mine. We could not get 5% of registered voters to ratify a 1.8% tax increase in the recent budget referendum. Thank you in advance for taking action on a updated fund balance allocation strategy.
Thank you, Tim. Any other public comment? Yeah?
Nope, I do not see any other.
Okay. Seeing no other public comments, we will move on to item G.
Yes, G1, like to make a motion to accept the April 4, 2022 regular town council meeting minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 2.
G2, like to make a motion for the April 26, 2022 town council minutes.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passing unanimously. Okay, item H, reading of communications and written appeals. Kathy?
You have the three written appeals in your packet.
Okay, any question on any of the written appeals? Okay. All right, moving on to report of committees. Farmington High School Building Committee.
Yes. I say before we get into the report, Mike D'Amico, that's great news and to say thank you because I've been harping for the last six months or so, or maybe more than that, about maybe getting an extra percent or a little something just to put us more in line with some of the neighboring towns with some of the issues we're facing with inflation. And I know this doesn't change the overall dollar amount that we could spend on a high school. I get that. But at the end of the day, it does make a big difference to what the taxpayers and citizens of Farmington are basically on the hook for after this. So this goes a long way, and this far exceeds any of the complaining that I did along the way. So thank you, Mike. So we have, actually, we, our next meeting is tomorrow at 5 o'clock in the Farmington High School library. But the last meeting, we actually selected a finalist for our structural threshold peer review, also selected our finalist for the code review services, which the town manager and the subcommittee will be going to contract with over the next couple of weeks or so. The biggest thing on the agenda for us, as I just mentioned, was the VE or value engineering and some of the big items that we've had to discuss over the last meeting, and we'll be shoring that up tomorrow. Value engineering and trying to keep the documents and the bids and the estimates all in line to make sure that we're not spending any more than we should be, we can't. And there were some hard decisions in there. You can go on FHSbuildingproject.org. There's a list of the actual VE items that are there if anybody's interested. Tomorrow, we'll continue that conversation.
Great. Thank you, Johnny. Green efforts.
Green efforts.
Hold on, Johnny, one second. I'm sorry, Rafina.
May I ask one question?
Sure.
Now that we've gotten the reimbursement rate up, will we take another look at those things that we removed and potentially put those back in to the design?
So, so the answer is, so the way that it works is that we have a specific number that we have to stick to. Regardless of the reimbursement rate, our referendum went out for the entire project as a whole, regardless of what is coming back, because that's the way that the process works. Those items that we've put on the VE list or that we're talking about value engineering, they're not, most of them aren't removed. They're put to the side in case we do another round of budgets and there's space for them. At the end, we cannot surpass the amount that was done regardless of reimbursement. That just means there'll be less for the town to pay in the end, but we still cannot spend any more money than what was accepted at a referendum without going back to the citizens and asking for more money. So I know that's hard to explain. But the reimbursement is basically the school cannot cost more than it does. We just will be on the hook for less money when the project is over. Does that make sense to you?
No. Let's speak in specifics. Okay. So can we talk specifically? What are some of the things that you're putting off to the side that you may?
I knew you were going to ask me that. So some, some of the items were percentage of glazing, percentage of skylights, changing some of the paved areas to asphalt or concrete. We discussed moving the tennis courts. Just overall, there's probably, Kat, maybe 40 items that we went through, both from a working group and as a committee. And all those items have done is to keep us in line with the estimates that our professional partners are bringing to us.
Okay.
So they're not forgotten.
Okay.
Okay? They're kind of in a placeholder. So we just finish what we call design documents. Now they're producing what they call construction documents, which are the documents used to go out the bit. So there'll be another round of going through estimates when the construction docs are done, and then again with when the bids come in. When the bids come in, if they are favorable in any kind of way, then the committee at that point will have the option to put some of those items back in. If they're unfavorable, then we're tasked with the opposite of going back and finding additional savings. It's very typical of the process, and I know that maybe it's amplified at these times because of some of the uncertainties when some of the inflation issues that we're facing. But at this point, it's too early to say, yes, we can or no, we can't. We're just kind of keeping these items to the side so that the project we're putting forward is within the budget that taxpayers have approved.
Okay, so to bring it down to my level, we're building a house, right? These are the upgrades?
Mm-hmm.
Like this pile of stuff that we have in the 40 things? Those are the upgrades. So if we have enough of a budget left over, once we build the house, then we can afford those upgrades?
Put those upgrades in. Correct. So laminate versus granite.
Gotcha.
Now you're speaking my language.
There we go. So you've mentioned inflation. So because we're getting a higher reimbursement rate, does that help us? So like, you know, inflation is wild, probably will be for a little bit. Will that at least help us in terms of that, getting a higher reimbursement rate?
So, and Kathy?
Can I just jump in for a second? Because we don't usually do as deep a dive with the liaison reports. But that does, it's okay. I think it's, they're legitimate questions that we will be addressing. But one of the keys here is until we get bids back, we don't really know where we are, I think, and Johnny or Kat, correct me. With their value engineering, they're kind of going through, as you're saying, what the lists of things are that would potentially come off or stay on depending where those bids come in. But until we get the actual numbers, we're, we'd just be guessing right now.
Okay.
Correct. I will just say for the final comment is, we have not touched anything that's programmatic at this point. Most of it is lipstick on it, you know, the finishes, the type of products we're putting into the building, some of the exterior stuff. But we haven't touched anything that has to do with the core reason that we're here, which is building a new high school that's going to be for the 21st century of our kids.
Thank you, and I think that all of our residents, especially the ones with kids in the school, will be thankful for that. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. Green efforts now.
Yes, so green efforts. So a couple of weekends ago, we had our cleanup day where the town and its citizens collected 2,780 pounds of total garbage from the roads, et cetera, which is, which is great. This was the first year that we had our townwide rummage sale at IAR. So for a few people that I know who visited it, it was, you know, pretty well-received. And I think that going forward, it's something we're going to build upon. Any of the fears we had about things being left over or left there or dumped afterwards were nullified. Everybody was on their best behavior, obviously. So it went very well. Our next meeting is actually canceled, so we'll be meeting in the month of July.
Great, thank you. And the cleanup day seemed to go incredibly. I stopped by the rummage sale for a first-year event. I think it had tremendous showing. So that was nice. I don't know if we kept track of how many of those nipper bottles we actually picked up, because back at the matchbook, I think we sold over 100,000 nip bottles in town this past year to come up with those dollars.
My son and I found at least 50, just ourselves on cleanup day.
Oh, yeah.
Crazy. And we got a globe at the rummage sale, so we participated in both halves of that. It was great.
Very nice, see? It's all big circle. Big circle. And I was at Tunxus Fire Department when the, I think, the two young women who had the largest haul of weight came in with a shopping cart that seemed like probably a snowplow took it out because it was not going to be doing any shopping anytime soon. So great job by everybody who participated. Land Acquisition Committee.
Only thing to report, that will be discussing a new business for N5 would be the approval to purchase the bland property on Middle Road.
Okay, thank you. And racial equity task force?
Yes, the task force is partnering with the Farmington libraries to put on the community forum of equality, diversity, inclusion. The date is scheduled for June 6, 2022, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM in the J. Johnson Community Room. And that will be at the main library. For a community forum on diversity, equity, inclusion facilitated by Dr. Martha Bracken-Harris and Treta Collier-Dickman. Next community conversation is going to be scheduled for September. Once school is back in session, the topic would be "Tell Me the Truth," exploring the heart of cross-racial conversation with Shay Stewart-Boulay and Debbie Irving. The task force also plans to participate in the Juneteenth event at the Hillstead Museum on June 25, 2022. This would be an excellent opportunity for task force members to meet and visit with the community members. There'll also be an outdoor community event with visual arts, food, music, and family fun activities. Our next meeting is set for Tuesday, May 31, at 6:30 over Zoom, where a few members of the clergy from local churches plan on joining us to discuss ways of collaborating.
Great, Rafina, yes?
Can I just add one thing, a plug for the Juneteenth event at the Hillstead Museum? It's a free event, 10 to 4 PM. You can go on the Hillstead website and just, you just have to RSVP. It was really fun last year, and I encourage everyone to attend this year.
Great, thank you. Okay, moving on to reports of the chair, which would be me. Okay, I was going to start off with the high school building added funds, so Mike stole my thunder there. No, great job. We appreciate all the hard work all of you did, bringing our reimbursement rate up to 30%. As was mentioned when we were talking about the high school building project, it's, the project is still capped at that $135-plus million. That does not change. It reduces the municipal cost, the amount that we're bonding, from roughly $109 million to $94 million. So that's a huge win for the taxpayers. So I would like to thank, again, all the representatives and all their hard work here. And I am just hopeful that this is a first step towards correcting the formula that I know, Mike, you and I have talked about for a long time. So I hope this, this 30% is something we can look forward to in the future. So thank you. The 1928 building. We were discussing that, and this evening, we're going to put together a committee for that to explore all the possible options. You know, that's the building itself and the connected buildings. It's just imperative that we get all the facts before we make any decision that is irreversible. So we want to find out what the options are before we make the final decision. So don't everybody get excited? We haven't made a decision. We're looking into what the options are. The other thing I want to talk about that has been coming up a little bit more lately is the Third Bridge. The, the planning has been going forward. There's a lot of research that's been done about the Third Bridge. So we will be seeing this council a presentation on that. CROG has been very involved in that, so we'll be hearing what they have to say about the regionalization of the bridge and what some of the possibilities are. Also, as you're going through town, you will notice we're doing a lot of paving, as we always do in paving season. So be careful around all the people that are doing the work, give them plenty of space. Also, I'm going to do a little extra thank you because Russ Arnold's done a tremendous job in getting grants. The Brickyard Road Project, which is going to be going into the second phase, we had a grant for, but we just received another grant of, I believe it's $2.7 million for Burlington Road. So these are above and beyond the bonding that we do as a town to pave our roads. So everyone, if you see our, Russ out and about, thank him for all these extra roads that we're going to get done, our own golden acorn, Russ Arnold. I want to also bring up a few events that are coming up soon in addition to Juneteenth. On the 20th, the Hillstead will be having their 75th gala, so you can go to their website and get details on that. On the 21st, the Congregational Church will be having their 250th anniversary. They will be holding an 18th-century fair to mark that. Also, on the 21st, the American Cancer Society is having their Relay for Life. So keep an eye out for that and support that if you can. The 22nd, East Farms is doing a 5K. The 23rd, Tunxus Hose Company is having their golf classic. The 24th, Chamber of Commerce is having a Business of Life Science event. And on the 26th, Bridge is holding a Well4Tech Boot Camp, which is set to connect startups in wellness and technology with investors, so our own little shark tank here in town. So take a look. You can go to our Explore Farmington webpage or Facebook page to get details on any of these different items. Thus ends the chair report. We will now move on to the Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. Few items of note coming up. One, we're waiting on signs like everyone else. We're going to put up the Wayfinder signs on the trails. Supply lines are issued, so we're still waiting on some of the items to come in. Friday, May 13, this Friday, is Union Bike to School Day. Anyone who would like to volunteer, certainly reach out. Bicycle Friendly Farmington Group, which is now the Bike Walk Farmington Group, reach out to them. We will be starting at the Burlington Trail Lot, and that's going to be at 7:30. So we can always use other riders joining with the parents and kid. It's a great event. It's a lot of fun. They get to school. They usually have a little party that the kids have a great time coming in. And if they have big backpacks, usually someone is helping out carrying like five or six backpacks, so the kids don't have to carry them all. There's a second group leaving from the trail pavilion across from the mini golf down there. Saturday, there's a second Bike to West Saturday, there's a second Bike to West District event. They couldn't do it during the week, so they're going to have it Saturday, they're going to do a loop, so that starts from nine, it starts at 9 o'clock, it's going to be 9 to 11, so we can also use some riders to help out and keep an eye on the kids as they're riding. And that is all we have from Bicycle and Trails Advisory Committee. We will now move on to Economic Development Committee Liaison, who I believe is not here with us today. We'll catch up next time, Farmington Historic District Commission, Brian.
All right, thank you. Just a couple of things to note, there was a Farmington resident living in the village who made an application for a temporary certificate for some new windows and new door on his home. Then that is the proper process when you live in the village, if you want to make some changes to the exterior of your homes, and that applies to residents and to businesses as well. That was approved, and that being said, not all individuals and businesses seem to be following that procedure, and that procedure is in place in the village to maintain our historic and authentic look and feel in the village, which really adds to the beauty and, and just the value of our town. So with that in mind, the, the committee put together a letter that went out to landlords and businesses as a reminder that it is important to keep that historic and authentic look in town, that they do make applications when they make changes to their exteriors, so that we can keep the village looking like a village, because it is absolutely valuable and beautiful and worth keeping like that. And that also being said, we are now looking into expanding the historic district in the village, which is exciting work, and that they've taken on to encourage people in the village to join the Historic Commission, and we look forward to having that happen.
Thank you, Brian.
Oh, and our next meeting is June 21st at 5 o'clock here.
Great. Housing Authority?
Yes, at the last meeting, we voted to, to ratify the Fair Housing Resolution, the Fair Housing Plan, and the Fair Housing Policy Statement, I get that right? And we are looking to have our next meeting on 5/18, May 18th, and I think it's outdoors at Maple Village, and that's it.
Great, thank you. Moving on to Library Board.
Library Board met April 20th, and will next meet May 18th, nothing to report.
Great. Town Plan and Zoning.
Town Planning and Zoning met last night, biggest thing that came out of the meeting was Trump will be expanding their operation, otherwise it's been a fairly light load of meetings for TPZ, but they have, I want to say, eight public hearings right now scheduled for June 6, so it's going to be getting busy as we get going.
Great. Water Pollution Control Authority.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Any other liaisons? Okay. Moving on to the Report of the Town Manager.
So just an update on the Memorial Day Parade, we did reach out to the veterans, and they did like the idea of the one parade this year and the route, so this year, we will be holding one parade, beginning on Perry Street, going through Unionville and ending at the Town Hall. The parade will form at 9:30 AM and step off at 10 AM, and usually the Town Council does walk together, so it would be 9:30 on Perry Street.
Great.
Just to give you an update on the Westwoods Golf Course Restaurant, our vendor unfortunately has decided that they are not going to be able to fulfill the contract with us, and so we are in the process of looking for someone to run our restaurant. So we're, Joe Swetki and Nancy Perrin are looking at some different options, and we're searching for a new vendor. The vendor has graciously agreed to remain on site while we search, while search is conducted. Rose Ponti's helping Nancy and to look at maybe some potential companies or restaurants, and we have met with some different people, so we'll keep you posted on that. As Representative D'Amico said about public act with the improper disposal of 50 milliliter alcoholic beverages, the, the nips, we did, we're planning on receiving about $16,000 a year in fees. At the present time, we've set aside the funds with the idea of accumulating sufficient funds over the next several years to either refurbish or purchase a new street sweeper. Under the town's adopted capital plan, our existing street sweeper is scheduled to be refurbished in '25, '26, so we thought we'd bank that money and then use it for a new street sweeper, which would fit in the requirements. And again, that's what our plan is, if something comes up in the meantime, and we think of something else, we can always be flexible on that, but that's where we thought we'd bank the money right now. You have the quarterly reports, and I wanted to just kind of go through, I know there's a lot of reports there, but I thought I'd highlight some of our more notable accomplishments in the report. The first thing I wanted to talk about is the Strategic Plan. So the Strategic Plan, as you know, is our policy and work plan for the next two years. This is an extremely important document that needed to be modified and improved in a timely manner. The Town Council worked collaboratively and approved the Strategic Plan at the end of January. The budget, between January and the end of April, building the municipal budget and then approving the budget takes a considerable amount of time for both the town staff and the Town Council. The budget passed in late April, and the budget season ran very smoothly. The collaborative effort of the Town Council members and the Town Council and the Board of Education should be noted. The ARPA funds, the town will be receiving over $7 million in ARPA funds. The Town Council created a subcommittee, and the subcommittee met several times and then recommended a policy statement for the entire Town Council to consider. Creating and approving a policy was crucial to ensure that the town follows best practice in the distribution of federal funds. COVID, between the end of January and mid-February, approximately 22% of our workforce tested positive for COVID, and due to CDC guidelines, additional employees needed to be quarantined, which brought our workforce down further. During the same time, the municipalities were charged by the state of Connecticut the task of handing out thousands of self-COVID test kits to the community in an incredible short time period. The town mobilized quickly and organized a large drive-through event at Tunxus Mead. We then launched an online registration hotline and distributed more tests to our community. Also during this time, we distributed over 30,000 masks. This was a very stressful time for both the community and our town employees. I'm proud of the way all our town departments worked together for, during the holiday season to keep operations going and, and complete the considerable distribution requirements from the state. The Farmington High School Project, this is the largest project in Farmington's history, and the town staff and the building committee have been working incredibly hard on the project. They're doing an incredible job on the design phase and looking forward to the construction phase of the project. The 1928 Ad-Hoc Committee, the 1928 Ad-Hoc Committee was created and met numerous times. Tonight, we have an item on the agenda to create a building committee. This ad hoc committee has completed a large volume of work in a short period of time, including a complete, including completing a townwide survey. The last five months have been very busy for both the town staff and the Town Council. I hope you would agree that we've accomplished a great deal. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions or go through any more of the detail of the quarterly plan that was attached in your packet.
Great, any questions?
Well, actually, I do just.
Yeah, right.
I was asked about the parade possibly coming to the village next year after, oh, and I'm very glad to see the sidewalks going, and it's very exciting. So is the possibility of having it in the village next year?
I think that's a discussion between the Town Council and the veterans, so I'm sure that's, that's possible, yeah.
Excellent.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make a motion to accept the Town Manager's report.
Second.
I have a motion to second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item L Appointments.
Yes, make a motion, make a motion for Agenda Item L10, Justice of the Peace, make a motion for Donna Manbrino to finish out the term.
Second.
We have a motion to second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously. Item M, Old Business, seeing none, we will move on to N, New Business, number one.
N1, I'd like to make a motion to set the property tax rate and solid waste special service charge for the 2022-2023 fiscal year.
Second.
Have a motion to second, Kathy?
You have the motion in front of you and the attachment, so this is setting the, the tax rate and this, and the solid waste service charge?
So everything that we went over in the budget, this is confirming?
It's your final, it's the property tax rate.
Final answer?
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, next.
Agenda Item N2, make a motion to adopt the attached resolution which authorizes the Town Manager to sign a grant application for the Small Cities Community Development Grant and to execute an assistance agreement under the Small Cities Community Development Block Grant Program.
Easy for you to say. I have a motion to second, any discussion? Kathy?
Again, this is what Nancy had discussed, and Nancy, correct me if I'm wrong, it's, it's $400,000, right? A $400,000 grant for the Tunxus Apartments.
Yes, for doors and windows.
For doors and windows.
Right. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously, next.
Make a motion for Agenda Item N3 to amend Chapter 29 Fire Department of the Farmington Town Code.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Kathy?
You have the amendment in your packet and shows the crossouts and ads, and we, you have the written note, and we went through the public hearing, so I don't know if you have any specific questions?
Any specific questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, item four.
N4, make a motion to appoint and charge a 1920 Building Committee in accordance with Chapter 53 Public Buildings of the Farmington Town Code, and to appoint the following members of the 1920 Building Committee as follows. Peter Masfrotista Chair, Joseph Capitoferrari Town Liaison, Christopher Fagan FHS Building Committee Liaison, Gene Barron Resident, Dan Kleiman Resident, Jack Kemper Resident, Mike Walsh Resident. And apart of that motion, you have a packet, which will include all of Part 1, but we are going to subtract Part 3 of that first section and then all of Part 2.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Kathy, want to make any clarification?
Yeah, just go through it one more time, is that you have the Part 1 of the charge, and we discussed that in length at the last meeting, so you, the charges this committee would review, the statement of needs, the community survey on the 1928 Building, and recommendations from the Ad-Hoc Building Committee. The committee shall make recommendations to the Town Council on the following options. The first option is to engage the architect to complete a conceptual design and a third-party estimate for, to provide preliminary pricing on the renovation of the 1928 Building as a standalone building. And number two is to engage an architect to complete the conceptual design and third-party cost estimated to provide preliminary pricing for the renovation of the 1928 Building and the retention of the 1952, 1964, and 1978 portions for the purpose of utilizing gym space with no immediate renovations. In addition, receive a range of preliminary cost estimates for the full renovation of the 1952, 64, and 78 to assess what the future long-term capital needs will be. And as you can see on my asterisks, in what we discussed at the last meeting, we had Option 2 and 3, we just merged them together for clarity, and then as Joey said, Number 3, it sounds like that is not going to happen, so that would be taken out. And then Part 2 is that before the Town Council selects an option, it will review financial information, including but not limited to the impact of the options on the long-term financial forecast, anticipated debt schedule, and projected tax impact. It will also determine if ARPA funds shall be used for this project, and on selection of an option, the Council shall recharge the committee to complete the schematic drawings and project cost estimates to bring the project to referendum per Section 53 of the Town Code. And then you have the background information that we talked about at the last meeting.
Great. Questions?
Okay, so, you know, I objected the last time where I tried to get Part 3 amended. So we're taking out Part 3 of the original charge for this one, or we just put them together as Part 2?
We had four before, and we, what we did was we merged two and three together, and now what we're getting rid of really from the last one is Number 4.
Okay.
So we're keeping everything to the top of the hill?
Yeah, gotcha. Okay, I'm going to get vetoed again, but that's okay. The second question is, how did we choose the folks that are going to be sitting on the committee? Did they express an interest? Did we go out to the community and say, and ask for volunteers? Or was this people that were interested?
We've gone out to the community, we've had a number of meetings here, these were people who expressed an interest. Most of them have some connections either, other than liaisons. Dan Kleiman and Gene Barron were both on the original Building Committee and have been on various Building Committees throughout town. Jack Kemper is a member of the Farmington Historic Society, and was, I think, from what I understand, followed very closely the Building Committee. Mike Walsh is a architect who's been involved in keeping an eye on the projects throughout, too.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Seeing none, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Yeah, could I just say that?
Yep, go ahead, sorry.
For the record, I'd like to oppose just the largeness of the charge, if it was a little bit more refined, and we were just looking at the 1928 Building and perhaps the 1952, which is right behind it.
Yep.
I'm all for that. I understand, I'm just, for the record, I think it's just way too large a charge.
Okay, that's fine.
That's really rhymy, I didn't mean it to be.
That's okay. And I think again, what we've been saying throughout is, we'd like to look at all the options before we start tearing down buildings, but, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Duly noted. Okay, next.
Item N5, make a motion to approve the purchase of the property owned by Robert and Eileen Bland located at 8480 Meadow Road, which consists of 11.27 acres, and 8481 Meadow Road consisting of 7.13 acres for a total price of $604,000.
Second.
We have a motion to second, Kathy?
As you know, we've gone through the process here, we've had our public hearing, it's gone to the 8-24 for the TPZ, we've received their report, so this is just the final vote on the acquisition of the property, which would be used as open space and/or municipal use.
Okay, any further questions?
Purchase without any encumbrances?
Correct.
Great.
Okay. Any questions? And I'll just make note, this is an adjoining property to the school over there, it's something that's been on the list for a long time, so we're looking forward to this. We have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, next.
Agenda Item N6, make a motion to award bid number 313, transportation disposal of sewage sludge to H.I. Stone and Son of Southbury, Connecticut, at a contract cost of $112 per wet ton.
Second.
Have a motion to second, Kathy?
This is to award a contract for the transportation of sewer sludge from the wastewater treatment plant to a disposal site operated by the MDC, and this is the low bid.
Okay, we have a motion to second, any further questions? Discussion, comments? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, next.
Agenda Item N7, make a motion to award bid number 314, maintenance and repair of police vehicles to Farmington Motorsports of Farmington, Connecticut, in accordance with their bid proposal dated April 13, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion to second, Kathy?
This bid is to contract with the vendor to provide maintenance and repair service for all police vehicles. The award would be for a period of July 1, 2022 to 2023, with the option to extend for an additional year. And this was the low bid.
Great. Motion to second, any further questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, next.
Agenda Item N8, make a motion to award bid number 315, large fire apparatus maintenance to Fleet Master Sales and Service of Windsor, Connecticut, Windsor Locks, Connecticut, in accordance with their bid submission dated April 13, 2022.
Second.
We have a motion to second, Kathy?
This motion is to contract with the vendor to provide maintenance and repair service for all our large fire apparatus in the Fire Department. Apparatus to be serviced under this award would include engine pumpers and the aerial ladder truck. And the Fire Staff has reviewed the bids and recommended going with this Fleet Master, which is the lowest reasonable responsible bidder.
Okay, any further questions? Have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, next.
Agenda Item N9, make a motion to award a contract for the purchase of 1 2022 Volvo, model number EWR130E, wheeled excavator with accessories to Tyler Equipment Corporation of Berlin, Connecticut, at a purchase price of $213,800.
Second.
I have a motion to second, Kathy?
This motion is to contract with the vendor to purchase the new excavator.
This motion is to contract with the vendor to purchase the new excavator. This machine will be used in the Highway Division for road paving and drainage installation work. This is a new piece of equipment, which will eventually replace a wheeled backhoe currently in operation. Funds are in the capital budget, and this acquisition of this vehicle would fall under the cooperative bid issued by Sourcewell. Sourcewell is a major governmental cooperative purchasing alliance. The town has used this organization in the past. This pricing contained in the bid calls for a 40.6% discount off the manufacturer's suggested retail price.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously, next.
N10, make a motion to approve the transfer of uncollectible property taxes to the Suspense Tax Book.
Second?
We have a motion to second, Kathy?
In accordance with state statute, the tax collector has recommended the 2022 Suspense Tax Book. The book has been compiled for the purposes of identifying sums that may be uncollectible, and it does in no way represents a cancellation of the tax. The tax office will continue to exercise every possible avenue to collect the unpaid tax, and the sum in total is $35,484.66.
Great. I will ask for further questions as long as Brian doesn't make a suspense joke.
No questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
The suspense was killing me.
Oh.
We almost made it.
That was grand.
You nailed it.
Agenda Item N11, make a motion to cancel the May 24, 2022 Town Council meeting.
Second?
We have a motion to second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Agenda Item N12, make a motion to approve the following tax property refunds.
Second?
Kathy?
No comment.
List as added. Okay, we have any other questions, comments for anyone? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed unanimously.
Joe?
Do you want to make a?
Yes, I do. Before we go into our next item, which would be executive session, at which point we will be departing and going off the air, I will leave you with tonight's comment from John Ruskin. When we build, let us think we build forever. With that, Joe?
I'd like to make a motion for Agenda Item O1. Executive Session to discuss matters concerning the sale or acquisition of real property. To adjourn the meeting to executive session as permitted by Connecticut General Statute Section 1-225A for the following purposes, as followed by Section 1, 200, subsection 6. That is, discussion of the selection of site or lease of sale property such as real estate by a political subdivision and by the state when publicly regarding such site, lease, sale, purchase, or construction will cause a likelihood of increased price until such time as the following property has been acquired or all proceedings or transactions concerned same have been terminated or abandoned.